Well, the meeting to order. Minutes? Oh, I have to decide who's going to be seated tonight. Lynn and Peter will be seated. So, seated tonight is Shawn Mastoni, myself, David Raspin, Ben Tilbrook, Lynn Conway, and Peter Shemowitz. You're out of us, Greg. Okay. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes for August 6th, 1641.
Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both ayes have it.
Wait.
I don't believe Peter was here for that meeting.
Oh, he has an abstain.
And it says that he was, so, other than that...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
He wasn't here.
Does it say he was here?
Yeah.
They do.
Something was the matter with our clerk.
I do read this stuff.
I do read it. I didn't really...
I don't verify people.
You can have a copy of it.
That was where I stopped.
First and safe stop.
All those in favor as I'm ended?
Aye.
Aye. Both ayes have it. Keith?
Well, before we begin, I just want to announce for anyone here that two of the public hearings on the agenda won't be taking place tonight. They'll be continued per the applicant's request. The first one is the public hearing for the Whalers Inn. They've requested that that be continued again to September 3rd, 7:00 p.m. at this location. And the public hearing for Kalanish LLC, which is the old Mystic Mill. The applicants have requested that that hearing be open but immediately continue to September 17th, so there won't be any discussion of that tonight. But the other public hearing for the Phoenix will be held later tonight. But the first item on the agenda is item 5D, the administrative review items. 5D-1, 19-183-ZON, Town of Stonington, Tom Curioso. Zoning permit application to place a 20-by-20 pre-built shed behind the outdoor basketball courts at the high school. Property located at 176 South Broad Street, Pawtucket, assessors map 25, block 1, lot With this application, the high school is just looking to place a storage shed near the basketball courts, meets the zoning bulk requirements of the RR80 zone. And, well, that's about all there is to it.
Any questions on this application? Any discussion?
Don't they have a number? Do they already have a shed out there?
No.
Oh, they don't? Oh, okay.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion on this application? Wake up.
I move to approve 19-183-ZON, Town of Stonington, for the placement of the shed.
Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both ayes have it.
Item 5D-2, PZ-1610SPA, Prospect Northeast Development LLC. Request approval to swap positions of buildings number 13 and 14 at 33 Prospect Street, Pawtucket, assessors map 4, block 16, lot 7, zone NDD-1. This application is for the Prospect Place Residential Development, which was approved back in 2006. A new owner has recommenced construction there after years of, some of it lying dormant. What they're asking is just to swap the positions of buildings number 13 and 14 on the west side of Prospect Street against the railroad tracks. The only reason is just to add visual interest by not mirroring the design of the buildings across the street, just so it'll look a bit less cookie cutter, so to speak. The commission approved a similar request to just flip the orientation of one building back in May. It meets the master plan for the site and in the zoning regulations of the neighborhood development district there.
I move to approve PZ-1610SPA, Prospect Northeast Development LLC.
Second motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both ayes have it. Keith, what happened to the cell tower? Disappeared?
Next one.
Is it?
That is on there. 5D-3 should be on there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, item 5D-3, request for comments for the proposed relocation of a cell tower facility from 86 Voluntown Road to 8 Alice Court, Pawtucket, assessors map 18, block 2, lot 5E, zone HI-60. It's a proposal to relocate the existing cell tower that's at 86 Voluntown Road, Route 49, to 8 Alice Court, Pawtucket. This is subject to the Connecticut Siting Council, so per state statutes, the council's review supersedes that of local zoning. So, this agenda item is really just for informational purposes or if you had any comments that you wanted to submit to the siding council. But what they're looking to do is just relocate that tower to Alice Court. So, if you're not familiar with Alice Court, it's sort of an industrial cul-de-sac up Voluntown Road, so it's less visible at that location. It's still visible because it's 198 or so feet tall, but it's less on a main road. It's farther away from a house that's right on Voluntown Road. The height's going to remain the same. The ground level will be no higher than it is now at its location. This is not going to be within 100 feet of any wetlands or in a flood hazard area. In the submission we have includes different 3D renderings and a site plan from different So, again, it's not really something for approval or denial, but just for your information or if you had any comments that you did want to send to the siding council.
Comment?
Is it in a better fall zone? Does that make a difference for a tower of the site? If it's away from the residential, it's quite better?
It's better.
Yeah, I mean, it is adjacent to some commercial buildings. I'm not sure about the fall zone, but that's something the siding council reviews.
Is it going to be a tree? Tree one?
No, no, it'll be the same cell tower-looking one.
Better looking than a tree. Everyone consent on this relocation?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both ayes. Hey, for your information, I just signed a thing that there was a subdivision on, where was that, Jeremy Hill Road?
Right, right.
That has been, the property has been sold, it's going to be no longer a subdivision, it's going to be a farm. So, reversing things. How large a lot subdivision was it, Keith?
About 23 or so.
Yeah. So, the new owner is going to make it a farm, so, that's different. Public hearing.
Pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut, revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, in pursuant to the zoning regulations for the Town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Mystic Middle School, 204 Mystic Ave, Mystic, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 20th, 2019, at 7:11 on the following applications. So, PZ-1915SUP Whalers Inn acquisition will be continued to the September 3rd meeting. And PZ-1917SUP and CAM Kalanish LLC is going to, we're opening it right now, but we're going to continue it to September 17th. So, right now, we're going to go to PZ-1...
We're going to have a motion to continue. Do I hear a motion to continue? So, vote. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both ayes have it, okay.
So, we are going to hear PZ-1918SUP, Richard A. Mann, Phoenix Entertainment LLC, special use permit application to modify both the approved hours of general operation and the hours of live music, requesting approval to host car shows from 5:00 to 8:00 on Tuesday nights during the summer through the end of October. Property located at 215 Liberty Street, Pawtucket, assessors map 16, block 4, lots 12 and 12A, zone LS-5.
Yep, okay.
Hi, my name is Sharon White. I'm the general manager for the Phoenix, and together with Richard Mann and I, we presented a special use permit to, number one, alter our hours of operation. In the original documents, on December 18th, 2018, there was strict stipulations based on our hours of music and general hours of operation. So, the live music shall be limited to between 5:00 p.m. and midnight on Wednesday through Friday, and from noon to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. General hours of operation shall not exceed midnight on Monday through Friday and 11:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. So, to us, flip-flopping those hours would make more sense to the community. By seeing open earlier or providing live music earlier during the week and later on weekends would be more compliant to our neighbors. So, it also states in there that our general hours of operation end exactly at the same time as our music. That does not allow us to safely get our customers out of our facility and onto the streets without, if we end our music and there's, okay, everyone's got to leave at once, what we're asking to do is to stay open to at least midnight, enough time to filter out our guests in a safe manner to the streets. We are not looking to change or extend our hours of live music. All we're asking to do is extend our hours to operate as a restaurant and a bar after 11 o'clock till midnight. We have been approved with a cafe license by the State of Connecticut, which makes us have to provide food up to the hours of closing. We intend to keep the restaurant completely open after the hours that the band ends. So, to us, in my original letter, there was an original concern stated in December 18th, page 4, paragraph 5. One of the neighbors raised a concern that all cars may exit at once when the entertainment ends. Allowing us to change our hours allows Phoenix to extend the general hours of operation to midnight, and bands ending at 11:00 p.m. will safely allow for the flow of outgoing traffic. So, that is our first request. So, we are doing this because I feel that in the original meeting, which I was not in attendance with, it was allowed for us to operate later during the week and earlier on the weekends. That should be flip-flopped. That way, neighbors who have to go to work the following morning are not disturbed after that time. We are not looking to, like I said, extend any live entertainment after 11 o'clock. We feel that as a restaurant and a music venue, we should be able to operate as a restaurant after our live music ends. We should be able to safely serve our guests and get them onto the public streets safely. So, that's our first request. Our second request was to operate a car show outside in the front parking lot, which would allow for an expected 50 to 75 participants. The car show will not include racing of cars. The car show is for the intent of showing classic and custom cars for the general public viewing. Expected number of people in attendance will vary based on weather and will not exceed the occupancy of the property lot space or the general occupancy of the building. The car show will not have live outdoor music. The DJ's music will not be at a volume that disturbs neighbors. DJ music will be provided by the host of the car show and will end at the close of the car show, which will be from 5:00 to 8:00. The volume is such that under the Stonington zoning nuisance regulations, it should fall within the guidelines as if someone else was having an event at their home with outside live music. We intend to only have, like, bebop music and announcer saying who the prize winners are for the car show. It is not meant to be disruptive. It is basically a place where people can come and show their classic cars. So, in response to our neighbors who are on the right side of the property, the north side, we intend to have the car shows located at the front and to the left-hand side, the furthest point away from the neighbors. Any announcement will be done at the front of the building only and not at the side of where the neighbors reside. Similar car shows have been done at other establishments and venues within the area without causing disturbances to neighborhoods. We do not, after review, intend to put up any porta-johns. The comments that we received from all the departments back to us, we feel that our facilities can accurately handle the number of guests that we will have at this venue. It will run in the summers approximately June 1st through the end of October, one night only. It will end at the end of October, and it will begin again the following year. So, we are only asking for these accommodations, A, because I feel that they were not stated properly in the first meeting, and as other restaurants and venues in our area, we should be able to operate under the same hours without general hours of operation restrictions. Other restaurants are able to serve food until midnight, 1 o'clock, C.C. O'Brien's, other places, they're not restricted to end at 11 o'clock. So, we feel that if the State of Connecticut liquor department feels that we are adequately under investigation, approved for a liquor license to serve alcohol till 2:00 a.m., we're not requesting that. All we're asking is to act as a restaurant after our live band ends. That's all that I have.
Any questions at this time?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the expected number of people in attendance will vary based on whether it will not exceed the occupancy of the property lot space.
Right.
What does that mean?
So, basically...
You have a loud number of parking places, now you're taking that over with the car show.
Right, but if I had any venue at any point, if I had a very popular band there, I'm not going to be able to exceed that parking lot occupancy.
What is that number, do you know?
The parking lot is 107, I believe?
117.
117.
117.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Are we expecting 50 to 70 cars?
50 to 70 cars.
Okay.
Based on my operations, since we opened Tuesday nights, we do not even get customers in the door until 6:30 at night. I normally only have 55 to 60 people that attend our venue on a Tuesday night. It's not like we're running a tribute band at 8:00, and we're going to fill the car lot, and we're not going to have enough space. We will operate within the guidelines that the town has set for us. We will not over-populate, we will not over-park, and if at any point that happens, we have to turn people away based on our guidelines of operation.
Mrs. The car show will mainly be, will be mainly for the front and side parking lots. Will you tighten that up and say only rather than mainly?
If you wish, that'd be fine.
And then the DJ...
Yeah, so if you're looking at, so if you were...
Let's use compass directions, perhaps.
Yeah, we've got some photos.
Yeah. Let's use compass directions, I don't go with that side.
Okay, so, I believe the neighbors are on the north side, so we intend to have it on the south side, in the opposite direction of the closest point to the neighbors, which is on the north side.
Far east side is on the north.
What's that?
Far east side is on the north.
On the north, so we want to do it on the south. Mr. Mann has bought two adjacent properties, lots, for the use of additional parking. So, not only has he put the expense into rehabilitating this property that had gone dormant, but he's also taken the expense of buying those two lots so that we can eventually add additional parking. So, we are trying to operate as a business to make revenue, to be successful, under the guidelines that the zoning has set forth for us. We're just asking for some changes to be made.
I have one last question. Is the DJ or any tents or porta-johns replaced in second hand to be away from the neighbors to the south and the west? Do you need porta-johns?
No, I just, no. I stated earlier, we originally thought we were going to acquire it, but after reviewing the number of people that may be in attendance, it is not necessary.
The porta-johns will not be...
They will not be utilized.
Like, okay. And tents, what kind of tents?
Well, like a pop-up tent, like a 10 by 10 that somebody stands under, they sit underneath it if it's hot out, you know, somebody, it's just a pop-up, it's a temporary tent.
And do you really need amplified sound system?
So, with the DJ and the music...
I'm a little nervous about that.
It's a small system. It's not like we're having an outside concert. It's kept at a level that would not interfere with, I mean, it's 5:00 to 8:00. We're not interfering with sleeping hours, we're not interfering with anything other than, you know, it's just, it's not a reckless show, it's a classic...
It's the time when most people are outside eating in their own backyard. Would they be able to hear it?
They may, I don't, we've never had a trial, we've never had this outside, so I cannot answer that question for you. If they could hear, at what level they would hear, I do not know.
Can I say something?
Sure.
We've had WBLQ, he came for Chamber of Commerce ribbon-cutting ceremonies, and then he was there this weekend to announce our comedian. It's that same type of thing, it's just like the radio guy underneath is awning with a couple of speakers like you have in here, but with a microphone that could reach out to, you know, David's 1956 truck won first prize with music. So, it's not like dancing music, it's not to be obstructive music. And basically, like, people could have their car stereos going, and then to have that, we wouldn't even need this meeting. Talking with Keith, we don't even need this meeting to ask for a car show, but it's like, like I said to Keith, I said, I'd rather go in front of the board and let the neighbors, you know, if they have an issue with it, the board can see and have it in writing that we have permission for this. You know, where it's not like I'm trying to sneak anything in, I'm being totally up in front with everybody.
Keith?
So, the purpose of zoning, as Gail explained it to me, was we filed for a special use permit because we changed the existing permitting from the prior existing property. And the only thing that changed in that permitting was the fact that we added live music. We are still operating at a full functional restaurant, bar, same thing that Fuji Gardens was. The only thing that we added was live music.
Indoors.
Indoors, and that's it. And we understand that, and we are obliged to follow that. We've asked for just a car show on a Tuesday night in the summer times. We do not extend, we are so conscientious of our neighbors that, I believe me, when I'm there at night and if a door has left propped open, I get a call, somebody messaged me, I hear about it, I circle that property all night long, shutting doors, trying to keep the noise contained. And we do not, 11 o'clock, if those bands know, it's done. And we have tight controls on our processes and procedures. We are not a dive bar, we are a classy restaurant that's offering live entertainment after your dinner. It's the same thing as if you went to downtown Westling, went to a restaurant, and then to the next.
You have outside seating?
We do.
Well, we have an outside patio.
The board asked us to put a 30-foot fence across.
With the fence.
But I went all the way around with the fence. So, if people are eating and drinking, they stay in that area. So, if they're looking at the cars, they're not eating and drinking. They come in the outside patio, that's all sealed off.
Well, this is the north side, right?
That's behind the building.
East side.
East side, yeah.
Yeah. So, but that picture also shows the level of compliance that we've been in. Originally, it was discussed that we had a fire pit in the back, which was something that was existing on the property when Mr. Mann took over. That has been alleviated. All the things that have been requested of Mr. Mann have been done. He has complied with all the requests and gone beyond and above just to make sure. We had lights that were pre-existing, we got a complaint. He went and replaced all the lighting on the outside of the building to downward lighting. So, anything that has been brought to Mr. Mann's attention has been immediately addressed.
Keith, let me follow on that.
So, would it be additional lighting for the car show?
No.
It ends at 8:00, so it would be pre-sunset.
Well, not in October.
It's, whatever we have for parking lot lights, we want to add any lights.
No additional lights.
Most people with the old cars, they leave before it gets started.
And it's one night a week?
One night a week.
So, what are the, do you happen to know what the sound regulations are at your property line?
I do not.
So, I mean, I've been to some of these car shows, right? I think we all have, and they can get loud just by the fact that these cars, you know, the special exhaust system, so they may be doing things, these cars, people that are coming to the show, that are out of your control and are still having an impact on the community. So, that's one concern that I have. I mean, certainly having a DJ and broadcasting sound, again, that's another concern. So, my strong feeling is that you should do a sound study to understand, you know, what's going to happen. Bring the DJ, bring your amplifiers, bring the cars, see what happens, have the sound measured at the property line and see what it's going to take to be in accordance with the sound regulations.
What is...
Well, we have to do all that for the music inside. As far as the cars, are you more concerned about the car noise or the DJ noise?
Comedy.
The car noise, it's, right, if the cars are registered and they're coming on the property, you can come there anyway. It's just...
They can, but, you know, that's true, you know, of a bike show, right? Harley-Davidson, so forth, they can be extremely loud. So, when one comes, okay, when 50 of them come and they roar up and down the street in a residential neighborhood, I think that's an entirely different situation.
True, it is, but it's...
You're creating it.
I know, but it's like having like a restaurant, bar, if I wanted a bike night and have hundreds of motorcycles there, I wouldn't need to be here to ask for permission.
You wouldn't.
You know, and then if they're playing their music, if they're revving them up, you know, if they're doing hole shots down the road, that'd be like a police issue.
You're still creating the conditions for that to happen.
I understand that.
What do you think?
But it's like, as far as having the cars there, Keith said that's not even a zoning thing that they regulate, but as far as the DJ thing, I just wanted to come here and ask permission, if I can have the guy that does all the chamber events DJ thing, if he can do that, why can't we do that? Or does it make it that the chamber can't have Christopher Paulo with his radio thing outside no more? So, I'm not asking for anything more.
Right, I think you should just follow the same, you know, procedure you followed when you got the indoor music permit, which was to test the sound levels at the property line and see what it comes out at.
Just for my clarification, the special use permit that we had applied for, we don't need a special use permit for a car show because zoning does not administrate. If they did all the events, if the zoning board was slammed with all the events in town, you'd get nothing done. So, my understanding is the zoning board does not regulate events. What we're here for is because in our original stipulation, the amplification of sound outside would change, and we're requesting only for one night that we have a variance. That's it. And we're requesting only for one night that we have a variance, that's it.
So could we just summarize, um, your hours again? I, I know you stated them in the beginning, but I, I did make myself a little table. So on Wednesday and Friday, currently, your music ends when?
Music always ends at eleven.
At eleven, and then it closes at?
Well, according to the stipulation.
Right.
On the certificate, it's stating that our general hours of operation shall not exceed midnight on Monday through Friday.
Okay.
At eleven PM on Saturday and Sunday. So the zoning permitted us to be open later during the week and earlier on the weekends under general operations. Now, my question is, why did we get restricted to general hours of operation if we're functioning as a restaurant? Are other restaurants stipulated to close at specific times of, of our business operations?
Um, that's basically, that is what was requested.
They have requested, can we stay and have an appetizer after the show? And it's really awkward for us to operate as a business where the music ends and we're kicking everyone out at eleven. I think that, in my opinion, we should be allowed to stay open and operate as a restaurant with no live music after the eleven o'clock hour.
And Candy at zoning, she said it's general hours, just don't let no one in at eleven. But, so we just wanted to clarify, general to stated. Because she said we could stay open as late as we want, but Connecticut requires, just can't let anyone in at that point. But then, just to clarify what general means, we'd like to stipulate.
At the, at the time that you came in December, there was a lot of discussion about volleyball courts and wasn't, wasn't there, right? And where to put them so that they, the neighbor, the neighbors were not affected? I think we, we downsized the number of volleyball courts. Peter's right, we had a clear discussion about the, the sound, right? We talked about the door being open and not being open. Was there some kind of a, like an entryway buffer, right? We said at that time that, um, the way the food was served, would there be food or drinks? And the answer was no, that that was not permitted at the volleyball outdoors, that they would have to go in. All right, so I'm remembering this correctly.
In the patio area.
Oh, right, in the patio area. Okay, all right, I got it. And, and just again, Keith, to clarify for me, the only reason that these hours were stipulated was because that was part of the application. It wasn't something that the board, based on comments, uh, mandated. It was just more for clarity because it was part of the application?
Yeah, there were the hours that were requested. I'm sure part of it, you know, might have been from public comment and to sort of cement those hours so it doesn't go past that. So I just want to clarify too that it looks like the original application, you know, had meals served until eight PM. So what they're saying tonight is that that would now go until close?
We have to, under our cafe license that was issued to us by the state of Connecticut.
Okay.
It is requested, it is part of that cafe license that we provide food service through the hours of operation.
Did you have that cafe license in December?
No.
Oh, okay, so.
So when, in December, when Mr. Mann approached zoning in December, he had a concept in his mind of a dinner club, nightclub, that would be. So as any new business with a new concept, we have watched it. We've watched it and we've known, you know, that was a great concept, but we need to alter that. We need to alter that for our guests, for the safety of the community, and we're willing to abide by all stipulations for noise control and the concerns of the residents. We, uh, we want to be good neighbors with our neighbors. You know, and that is a commercial property. It has always been a commercial property. It is not like this is a new commercial property. It has always been that way. And as Gail explained it to me, that I called her today and I said, were there any prior stipulated hours put on Fuji Gardens? There were none. So why should those stipulated hours apply to us?
So I'm just pointing out the food thing just because in my report I said the meal times were unchanged, but, you know, it's going later. Not that that's necessarily a bad thing, it might make it. But less of a bar, more of a restaurant at those hours.
It is more of a restaurant, a food sale.
Because it wasn't stipulated about the meal time, it doesn't really matter, right? I mean, because it wasn't stipulated. So it's not like they were at a violation currently because they serve food after eight because they got the cafe license because it wasn't stipulated?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's an issue.
I mean, as we went through the process, I came on board in January to help Mr. Mann get the business up and running. And so as I went through the process of all the applications, we learned more information as we went. So we figured, let's learn as much as we can, let's see how we progress in the next few months. And that's, you know, we have, Mr. Mann has invested a lot of money into a property that was dilapidating, it was an eyesore to the community. And now he's turning it into a business, but we want a commercial business, but we want to be compliant. We're just requesting the ability to make revenue for a sustainable business as a restaurant that has live entertainment as it prior was zoned and permitted before. I, yep, I did too. So, I mean, you can look at that one of two ways. You can look at it this way, and it serves its purpose so that we don't throw an outside concert, right? It does. We don't put somebody out in the back playing Motley Crue. You know, so yes, it serves a purpose. What we're requesting is something that is a controlled hours, five to eight, within the nuisance ordinance guidelines between six AM and ten PM. What if the neighbors around the corner decided that they wanted to blast their music out their window for three hours in the afternoon and it disturbed their neighbors? Do, do, what's, you know, they get warned by the police. It's all, it's all controlled by the police, but it falls within the nuisance ordinance.
And it's what I'd be willing to do too. It's like, even though it's not a zoning thing, but you could like put it in the minutes. And it's like the chief of police said, it's like, well, how about if you try it once and bring it back? Said that won't work because to do this, we got to be on the guy's schedule. And the first night, there might be one car there. And it could take a season to get the people to come with their cars. And, and then if there's any problems, i- if, if one guy does like a hole shot, I, I would talk to him and tell him, you can't do that here. Same thing we are with drinking. People don't get it, come in there and get drunk. It's like, it's not that type of place. And, and then if the music was loud, if it was bothering any neighbors, if you told me, you either got to dial it down or it's going to end. And then it's like, as he's dealt with me, like I do what he tells me to do. It's like, you know, I'm not here to try to pull anything. And then so if, if we try this, and it's not going to happen this year because we got to get on the docket, it'd be next year. And if it doesn't, if it's not a smooth operation, you could tell us, you know, give us a warning, now if that don't work, tell us it's like, you know, we got to stop this. And I would. And you could put that in any minutes you want. It's like, because we don't want problems with the neighbors, we don't want problems with the police, but we want people to come with their antique cars, play horseshoes, cornhole, and things like, wow, Bobby Stray Sand's coming this weekend, I'm going to bring, you know, my wife, you know? It's, uh, to, to enjoy the place.
But just to, to backpedal, in June, we did a Facebook posting announcing we were going to have a car show. We received an immediate complaint. So what did we do? We didn't continue going forward with the car show, we pulled it. And we're like, okay, what do we need to do to get this approved? It's not like we ignored the complaint. We said, okay, what are the steps we need to take to get this approved? And to do it in a reasonable fashion. And that's what we're here to do. Okay?
Who speaks first, then all those in favor, and then all those in opposition, and then general comments. Uh, is anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone opposed this applic-, uh, those opposed to Julie McNeil?
Can you hear me okay? Is that all right? I submitted a letter that I'll just read out loud, it's exhibit number two. We are responding to the special use permit requested by Richard Mann, Phoenix Enterprise, particularly the request for the Tuesday night car shows. We are property owners adjacent to Phoenix, and not only do we reside here, we also earn our income from the homes we rent on this property. We attended the meeting on December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, when Mr. Mann was granted a special use permit for his fine dining and entertainment establishment. At that time, two stipulations regarding outside sound were established. Number one, no amplified live entertainment shall occur outdoors. And number two, there shall be no outdoor amplification of sound. We are strongly opposed to any outdoor activity that would allow any amplified sound. It is our concern that Mr. Mann requests, is requesting an approval of an outside activity that would void these stipulations and bring disruption to the neighborhood. To understand the situation better, my husband and I attended a car show run by the same company Mr. Mann said he would be using. We found the music and DJ commentary to be very loud as amplification of both voice and music was used. In addition to the DJ's music and his commentary, the entry and exit of the fifty to seventy-five participating show cars plus people attending the show would cause disruptive noise and activity that we feel inappropriate for the neighborhood. He had suggested in his application about tents and porta-johns, and we feel that that would take away from the ambiance of the neighborhood. It's our foremost concern that the approval of the car shows would void stipulations number three and number nine and set a precedent for any future outdoor events using amplified sound. We respectfully request that the commission deny the special use permit as it would violate stipulations already in place that protect the right to a peaceful environment for our tenants, our neighbors, and ourselves. You also have a sheet of signatures from surrounding residents, tenants, and landlords who oppose the special use permit. I just also like to say, we wish no ill will to Mr. Mann. In fact, we hope that Phoenix to be a success in his original vision of being the area's premier fine dining and entertainment establishment. You know, they, and it, I, I, it is not just people on Felice Avenue. There, there's, there's neighbors directly across the street, and there's Manor Street that goes pretty much out there, out the driveway into Manor Street. There've, besides the sound, um, the traffic there is very dangerous. When you're coming westbound on Route Two towards town, there's two lanes that go down to one lane. People are almost jockeying for position and speeding there. A car show, I think, would be a huge distraction and possibly cause more of a traffic issue. Not to mention how many cars, you know, coming and going for that particular night. I know these kinds of events go on in other places, but I don't think any one of them is surrounded by residential, uh, neighborhood. Yeah, and, and the noise analysis, I, I think that's, that should be a required thing. Like I said, it's going to affect the people directly across the street more than it will affect me and my, you know, in my house, but, uh, you know, I, I did go around and get signatures. A few people said that they have been disturbed just by, um, I think, one mentioned that they, they were singing karaoke outside the front door one night. She did not call the police. Another neighbor did call the police because of motorcycle engines revving and, you know, people in the parking lot making noise. So I think we're being as patient as we can. Um, and I still say that we support Phoenix as a restaurant, um, and a music venue. I just would like to see them keep it inside. Some of the zoning, it, it's been an experience for me because I've, I'm just trying to get all this information together and going through the zoning regulations, this, this section, this, and, you know, uh, to, to find out how I can relate to the car show. You know, some of these special permits are supposed to not have an adverse effect on the re, on the character of the district, property values, prosperity of the residents of the area, paraphrasing, and I just think that, that the car shows with the noise and the, just the excessive outdoor activity is going to take away from all that. The, I, I have a little few questions on the hours. It is, so you want us to change the hours so the music's still stopping at eleven? Is that correct?
Yes.
The music is still stopping at eleven?
Yeah, the music will end at the same time, that will never change.
And then you do exit the building at?
We want to operate as a restaurant.
Till midnight?
Till midnight or whatever. The state of Connecticut says I can serve alcohol till two AM. There are no other restaurants around me that are stipulated as far as hours. So the purpose of zoning is to, for use of a property, not to separate general hours of operation. So if every business that went before the zoning board was stipulated as.
You'll get your, you'll get your turn. Can you come back on this? Thank you.
Well, I guess that's basically it.
That the, you know, that we've already established that the outdoor sound would be an issue. So I don't see how this has changed. I guess that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
I was curious how many signatures you gathered up?
Um, you have them there. I honestly, I don't remember, I didn't count.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry McNeil?
You know, I said that it is a commercial property, it is, but it is surrounded by residential property. And I think that does make a difference when you're talking restaurants in town or in strip malls out of town and such. This is one restaurant surrounded by residents, and he's changing the venue, in my mind, to something that's just not conducive to the neighborhood.
Anyone else like to speak, you opposed this application?
Michael Murphy. I'm on one Glasgow Road directly across the street from Phoenix. I'd like to start by saying that, uh, we can hear the music, but it's not bad. It's not over my television like back in December we talked about, which is fine. And as far as the hours of operation go, my mind is, I'm listening to what's going on. If the music doesn't change, personally, I have no problem with them being a restaurant. My biggest concern is, again, stipulation number three and number nine. The other day, he did have WBLQ, and I could hear them plain as day. I did not voice any opinion, I did not make a phone call because again, I, I knew this meeting was coming up. I did not make a phone call because, again, I knew this meeting was coming up. But during that time, you could definitely hear the guy talking, the music being played. I mean, it wasn't for a long time. But for a car show that's going to go on for three hours, it's going to be loud. It's going to be able to hear it, especially across the street right from the parking lot. And a couple of other things that were said tonight. I mean, it is a piece of commercial property. I understand that. But again, it's surrounded by residential. And for the better part of 15, maybe 18 years, it sat totally idle. So everybody residential that's living there actually saw nothing, heard nothing. It was never an issue. Like I said, again, the car show issue is the outside amplification of sound. That's my concern. And I hope the board considers that. And number nine, I think, is very important. It's basically it.
Is this house right on Liberty's street?
Yes, it is. Corner of Liberty and Glasgow.
Okay.
Did he decide anything? Have you decided? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Brian Kilty. I live at 20 Oak Hill Gardens, so I'm kind of back a little bit. So I'm not really affected too much. But I do own Perks and Quarks downtown Westerly. We do live music six nights a week, so it would be extremely hypocritical of me to get up here and say, "Don't do this," or "Don't do that," whatever it might be. I will say this. Their hours of operation, I agree with 1,000%. I think that's... I think it's great. It helps us to get people out of the establishment. I think it's fantastic. Coming home at night, I get home a lot at late nights. I've had zero issues with their parking lot, with the traffic, with all of it. This might be against the grain a little bit, but I kind of like the idea of the car show. But it's not the same guy that does the Boneyard or the Windjammer, is it? All right. That's what I have an issue with. Their DJ is out of control. And I've even been to those shows before, and he's just super loud, and he kind of gives the old, "I'm not going to turn it down."
He's retired. It's like he was the one that...
Okay, all right.
But it would be not the same kind of guy.
I mean, I'm in the music industry as well, and, you know, run the restaurant and whatnot, but I'm absolutely on the side of my neighbors as well. I'm trying to keep them happy. I wouldn't say no to a DJ. I would say no to that DJ. And something quiet. We were having a conversation the other day with some of these guys that run the car shows. They don't even want the DJs there because they want to talk about their cars. And that's really it. I'm not worried about the traffic. I think I'm really impressed with how the traffic's been. Very impressed, actually. I was really scared it was going to be another Rosalini's episode. 2:00 a.m., cops shooting guys, you know, not... You know, cops shooting fish in a barrel, pulling them over left and right from the VFW across the street. I think they're doing a great job with all that stuff. But like I said, I live down the road a little bit in Oak Hill Gardens, not where this gentleman lives across the street, so... But the DJ thing, you know, I'm sorry. I can't get on page with the DJ. I like the car show, but I don't like the DJ. All right? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, we... Any general comments? Here, please.
I'm Jean Fiore. I live in the borough, but I grew up on West Vine, and I know the former Rosalini's very well. My concern is that a new precedent may be set. Like, how far, if it's the car show now, what will it be next? Also, I'm curious about the other lots that were purchased. Are they currently being used? These other two lots that the woman had addressed? Is that going to be an expansion of parking? And if so, is this going to be a bigger operation than what it currently is? It seems to make sense on the hours, changing the weekday hours and the weekend hours. But why did you previously not allow for amplification in outdoors? So why would you then now change that? There must have been a reason for that. That would be my big question. Why was that the original stipulation? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any general comments? Time for rebuttal? Mr. Mann?
I understand the neighbors' concerns, and it's... And we don't want a DJ that's loud. We don't want anything to bother anybody. And it's... And again, it's... Well, we don't really need permission to have the cars there, just the outside music. If you let us try it, and if any neighbors complain with a real concern that it's too loud, again, you like pull this away from us. Because we don't want to bother anybody. As far as the noise of the cars or motorcycles and whatnot, very few motorcycles go there. It's a... I have one, but it's very quiet. But it's... And then again, if the car is allowed and stuff like that, that's something that, as a restaurant owner, I don't have to monitor. You know, if they're legal in there. And so as long as they aren't doing stupid things in there, that's... That would be my concern. But we don't want people coming in there with hopped-up cars and doing hole shots down the road. We want bring, like, the crowd that we want coming on a regular basis, you know, grown-ups coming in for fine food and good shows. You know, if they have, like, classy cars, they want to come. That's what it's all about. It's not to have anything reckless or noisy or out of control.
So a question for you. Given the scheduling problems that you face in making these kinds of arrangements, how much of a test would be practical? What I'm thinking is, is... Could you do this for a month or two and then come back?
Not really. I'd have, like, Rich, the DJ car guy, for example. I signed a contract with him where he was going to come in once a week. And then I had to tell him I got to pull that contract. So to get on someone's books to do this, whether they do them different places, I would have to sign a contract with them to have them do that. But it's like whoever I did this contract with, where this particular guy is retiring, trying to sell his business, I would tell them that the town is not going to put up with any loud noise or any misbehavior. If they do, they're going to take it away from us. And that would make the contract null and void. But nobody would sign a contract with me if I say, "Well, let's try it for two weeks, and in six months, I get to go in front of the board again and see what they say." Yes.
So do you know to what extent you need a DJ to make a car show successful?
It's what Brian said, that you don't really need a DJ for the music, he was saying. But as far as the pride... Kind of like you have amplified music, amplified noise right here. Just, you know, I'm 10 feet away from it. So that's... This would be the system we would need. Nothing more than this. It's not... And when we came for the special use thing, for the music inside, like at the Ratskell, where they have concerts outside, a lot of places in Connecticut do. We don't want to do that. So to not have a bandstand, but just if there's two speakers playing Beach Boy music and there's somebody on a microphone saying, "Who won best show of the night?" It's like, that's all the music really has to be. It doesn't have to be loud.
Can't you just have someone on a microphone saying, "Who won the best show without the music?"
If that's what the board wants, we can do that. If that would appease the neighbors, we can do that. Well, how about, like, house music with speakers? Can we do that?
You mean house music?
You know, just like, like the speakers we have, like at the foyer when you walk in. Can we just have some speakers?
No. I think we've got to keep it in, the speakers inside. But if you could have a show where just the announcements and no music, then they could... Look at the cars, not that listen to music. And the second thing to the board, this is similar to the request we had on the Dance Palace thing. Yeah. Where we granted them a limited time to try it. And then they had to come back the next year to be sure that... We went out and arm our leg to say, "But we had the restrictions on them, and I think we could put restrictions on you, maybe. But I really don't think we need any music. I think we could just have announcements." And people... They're looking at cars. They're not listening to... They don't care what the music is. I mean, at least I don't.
Well, that one guy, though...
I go to things like, "I don't even hear it. You have music going in the background?" I mean, it's blacked out of your ears. You don't even pay attention to the noise. So I think maybe we could do that. But it's up to my members to decide how we can do it. But that's something I think we could have under consideration. Any other questions?
I just think, I think regardless of the outcome or what the committee decides, I think the sound level at this curb, I think it's 55, 60 decibels, which is basically the background noise level of the street on any given day. I think you're going to have a very hard time abiding by that with amplified sound of any kind outdoors. You're already having a hard time when the doors apparently are open and closed when the music is inside the restaurant. So regardless, again, of what we decide, I think you're fighting your own uphill battle.
And with the neighbors' issues, the only issues are the amplified DJ music. So it's like, I'd be willing just to take that off the table and make everybody happy.
Just a few. So we sent this application to different departments and boards. This was before the Board of Police Commissioners in July. They didn't give a, you know, complete yes or no to the idea of the car shows, but they just had the comments that Mr. Mann should follow up with the chief in planning a zoning to possibly have a test run with your approval, as we were talking about, and come back to the Police Commission for future shows. Other comments about not having porta-johns, which they discussed they didn't want here. So in my report, one of the recommended stipulations I had in there was that the signage should conform to the signage regulations. It's sort of, you know, some signs have taken off there. So if we have that as a stipulation, we can talk about what's allowed, not allowed there with the signs. Just sort of a tangential zoning issue. As far as the recommended stipulations, you know, I had some in the report that were sort of based upon what the Police Commission said, but I don't know which direction the commission will go. So we can visit that in a few minutes once we know which direction you'll go here. One of the things with the hours, just wanted to point out that, you know, that live music hours will not be getting later. For the record, there will be an extra night of live music because Tuesdays will be thrown into the mix, where when it was originally approved, the live music during the week was Wednesday through Friday, 5:00 p.m. to midnight. What's proposed is Tuesday to Friday, with Tuesday through Thursday only being till 11:00 p.m. So it's earlier during the week, but Tuesday is in the mix now as a possibility for live music.
Well, Tuesdays, we do line dancing, which people like. So we might not even have live music on Tuesday. And Wednesdays, we're doing comedy. So it's like, so it's just like to have it while we can.
Yeah, yeah. And maybe the line dancing is just as loud, but it's not technically live music.
Right.
And as was talked about, too, you know, one of the big decisions is just, do you want to, you know, modify that stipulation number nine that said there shall be no outdoor amplification of sound for the either DJ music or DJ announcements? And to answer the question from earlier about why that stipulation was in there, I believe that was in there talking about the sort of piped-in restaurant music. The commission didn't want that to be played at the outdoor seating in the back. So I think that's where that stipulation come from. Because there was a separate stipulation about no amplified live entertainment outdoors. So this one was more about the piped-in music. Yeah, and that's a... That's it for me, depending on which direction you want to go here.
I have a question before we close the hearing. So are you officially withdrawing the part for amplified music outside? Or are you letting it stay as is and us decide?
If that's the sticking point to get these...
That's up to you.
Well, if that is the sticking point to get... To have you agree on the other stuff we're asking for, if that makes it easier, I would do that.
Yes, no? You tell us. I don't want to make the decision for you.
If we left that in there, the live music part, are you considering the car show and the live music permanently as bundled? Or could you potentially decide on yes to the car show, but no to the live music?
So Keith, do we... The car show itself, we don't really have jurisdiction over anyways. It's just amplified music?
That was my take on it. Ultimately, it's up to you as the commission. But the live music and the DJ was the main thing that they need to come back for, to you to specifically get approval for. The car show of just having people with old cars park in your lot and hang out, that's a little bit more questionable whether they need your approval?
So if we just... I'm not saying we are. But if we were, if we denied everything tonight, they could still have a car show without any amplification, correct?
They could, unless you specifically said, "No, we forbid you to have any sort of car show."
Okay.
Mr. Mann, I've never been to a car show. So... Is it a contest? Are there prizes? Are there games? What do you do?
Basically, people that have old cars, they could have a value from $30,000 to $200,000. They bring them to these shows, and they put their picnic chair out behind them. And then most of these people are car aficionados. Where they built the car, they love that car, and they're very proud of it. So they have their trophies in the trunk or whatnot. They're talking about it. The other car enthusiasts and the people bringing their kids, their grandkids come and looking at the cars. It's kind of a neat thing to go do. And it's... And so it's not people... They're all parked. They, you know, they drive them in there. And so it's...
And then is there voting or something? Is that what happens?
They have contests, like the Best Car, the Best Choice, you know, different awards.
Okay, all right. So they put a number in a basket, and then somebody tallies it up? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Ike.
Now, we could do it without a DJ, and the cars could come, and they could have their own stereos on. And that's... There's nothing wrong about that. And there's nothing wrong if I had 300 motorcycle people come there, you know, with their boom boxes. It's a... But I don't want my place to be a breaker bar. You know, I want it to be an upscale place. And then as far as the piped-in music, it's like, I thought that was all about, like, entertainment music, not having like a radio mic.
Yeah, that was my impression. It was either one, either broadcasting the live music outdoors or just having piped-in restaurant music the commission didn't want to have.
Regarding boom boxes and people with their stereos, I think your customers still have to abide by the sound level of the...
Right. Right, and I don't want that. It's like, I don't want that, you know?
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? So, three seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion, motion on this application?
Can I just ask a clarifying question for Keith? So the proposed stipulation number four, no outdoor live music sale of food or alcohol is permitted. Don't we currently have sale of food and alcohol out in that back fenced area?
We do. Yeah, I wasn't thinking of that.
So we can't have that?
Right.
Cause I mean, that's taking away something from them there.
Right, yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean for that.
Okay, do I hear a motion, an application? Did you grab the mic?
Oh, I didn't, all right. Motion to approve the application with stipulations. So the first part, uh, no stipulations on the hours of operation after the music ends.
Part A.
Part A. Part B, um, the stipulations as enumerated in the town document here, um, that the dates of operation, the time, Tuesday, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., uh, was it July, June 1st to October 31st. No portable toilets, no outdoor live music, sale of food, alcohol will be permitted. And that we allow for, on a trial basis, no. No, that's it.
You can't do four.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I can't do that?
I'd like to modify that number four. No outside food sold outside the patio area. We've proved outside sales in the patio area.
Oh, right, okay.
Outside the patio area.
Which also.
Which is out back.
And I'd like to add the stipulation, uh, that the car show is limited to, what did they say? Front and side?
Front and.
Front and side of the property?
South side.
South.
Upper west.
Right. That's it. That's my, that's my motion.
Do I have a second on this motion?
Can you repeat your motion?
Sorry, I don't.
Repeat it.
Okay. We got part A. You're good. Part B, the Tuesdays from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., from June 1st to October 31st. No portable toilets and no out, no amplified sound. So upholding number nine from the previous ruling.
So that includes a DJ speaking?
Yeah. Uphold number nine, no amplified sound. Yeah, upholding number nine from the previous.
So just clarifying your stipulation number one, the way it's written here, it says, this approval authorizes one car show on a Tuesday from five to eight prior to, the way this reads, Keith, it sounds like one car show a year. I just want to make sure that we have this.
Well, the way I drafted in there was the police commission's recommendation of just doing one trial one, but that doesn't seem like what.
If possible.
That's, yeah, that's not what. So basically, yeah, number one would just be modified to limit it to having it on Tuesdays from five to eight, um, between June 1st and October.
But do we even need to include anything about a car show since we really don't regulate it? That's what I'm kind of getting at.
He seemed to think that we do.
Well, because you have these other stipulations talking about the, um, where it's going to be located in the south and west side, I think you sort of have to address it through your approval.
Because of the traffic flow and so forth, I mean those.
Yeah, because otherwise if you don't adjust the car show, it's hard to say those other things about keeping it in certain areas of the lot.
Right.
Do I hear a second?
Not sure.
Do I want a second?
Yeah, just so, just to be clear, for the number one, what I had drafted in there thinking it was sort of a one-time thing was, um, these specific dates like June 1st, 2020 to October 31st, 2020. But we're getting rid of that, we're just sort of approving it, we can keep doing it between those dates.
It should be for one year.
Okay.
A special use permit for one year.
You have five.
For a car show once a week on Tuesdays between those five and eight. On those months.
With no music.
With no amplified outdoor sound.
But why can't we, because we don't really regulate car shows, why can't we just have two stipulations? The first stipulation being that we're removing the hours of operation to comply with.
State.
The state. So that would be like stipulation number one. Stipulation number two would be to, we're reinforcing no amplified music or any amplification of anything outside.
I, I'm fine with that. I think Keith has an issue though, because then that the car show could, in theory, consume the whole property. So do we want to?
But it could do that anywhere. Limits, limits there.
Well, that's up to us. So that's, that's the risk you have when you come forward.
But.
So we don't have a motion yet.
Yeah, you go ahead. It's not about the car. Mr. Mann, the Phoenix Corporation could have said it's a, I'm making it up, okay? It's a, a comic book convention, that's a good one. It's, um, a fashion show. It's a dog show. I'm, I'm making these things up. I don't believe that it's about whether it's cars or anything else. So it's about the hours of operation, which everybody agrees on. It's about the amplification and it's about whatever event is taking place outside on the property that is limited to the front and the side. And maybe you just, south, sorry. And you, and we don't even mention the car show.
So that's.
And that covers, Mr. Mann has a different idea later on.
So make your motion.
I don't know anywhere that we have outside amplification in town and we've had approved it anywhere.
Right. I think we said that. Right.
So you guys agree. First time ever.
Uh, does Dog Watch? Does Dog Watch have outside?
They.
Dog Watch bar.
Oh, no, but Dog Watch.
I know they've gotten, have they come before you?
Yes.
Dog Watch?
Yeah, M Bar.
And the M Bar.
M Bar as in inside.
Inside, M Bar.
No, they can't open them.
No, they can't open the doors.
Not supposed to.
Thank you, motion.
So that sounded like, it sounded like a motion.
One other thing with the hours, someone mentioned getting rid of the hours restrictions and going to what the state said. Uh, but the testimony was that the state says they can be open until two, which is more than the original application. So, you know, this application.
Two any day or just one day a week?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was every night or just weekends, but I mean, this application, what was asked for was, um, switching the hours of the live music and having the meals go until closing time, which, um, was approved as no later than midnight.
But are you saying that they consider alcohol until two? Cause alcohol is not legal?
No, they close at midnight.
No, but apparently that's, that's not what we've told them in any approval, but apparently that's what their state permit lets them do.
But is our, what is our decision to decide that?
Um, I think it does in this case because, you know, we have, uh, we have the existing permit from December that limits their hours. I just wanted, I just want the commission to be.
Is it midnight or twenty?
Well, I guess what Keith is saying is because they only asked for midnight.
But we'd give them anything, but.
But if we did, but can they say, oh, you gave us midnight, the state allows us to do it?
No.
So I'll, I'll take a crack at this. So I motion that we approve the application's, um, proposed changes to the approved hours of the applicant's, uh, proposed changes for approved hours of, of food and music. That we approve, no, and for part B, that there's no portable toilets shall be used on the premises. There's no amplified, amplified music, sale of food, amplified music, um, outside of the building on the premises. That the sale of food or alcohol is permitted only in the fence patio area outside of the building. That, uh, the site and building signage shall conform with section 7.1.2 zoning regulations. That the applicant shall work with the Stonington Police Department and the Stonington Board of Police Commissioners to coordinate public safety elements for any outdoor event that they hold. And that any outdoor event that is held is restricted to the front of the building and the south side of the building from, and can only take place on Tuesdays from five to eight, from June 1st through October 31st period. So it's not a test.
Second.
When I said music, I meant, I meant sound, sound music.
Amplification.
Amplification, yes.
Any discussion? No one in favor of this?
You know, the way I look at it is first off, I think the applicant is trying to be very upfront. I think that, you know, the neighbors have legitimate concerns and I think the applicant is trying to, you know, make sure everybody is happy. So I, I, I think there's a, there's a, a factor there of people being upfront and trying to cooperate with one another. Nobody wants their property values to go down. Everybody wants to live, you know, harmoniously. I think that, you know, we've opened it up. We, we, you know, we really can't say you can have a car show, you can't have a car show, but we said you wanted it on Tuesdays, we've given it to you on Tuesdays. You wanted it at this time, we've given it to you on this time. I, I think saying that you could just try it for a year, the only thing that was in question to try for a year was the amplification of sound and, and, you know, that would be difficult. And I think that, that what I heard was, you know, they can make this work if, without it. And in reality, they don't have to come back if they want the fashion show or whatever. So that's, that's what I think.
All those in favor of this motion?
Uh.
I.
Any more discussion on this motion? Oh, we, I, I'm sorry, went backwards. Anyone opposed? The eyes have it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Me adjourn.